Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is October 10, 2018. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
Do we have a second?
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. We are in full complement tonight up here. I have one announcement. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on October 8th following the regularly scheduled workshop meeting on that date to discuss two personnel matters and one matter of potential litigation. Later this evening, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing on a zoning code amendment related to no-impact home-based businesses in residential zoning districts. Any questions or comments related to the zoning code amendment should be held until the public hearing is conducted. At this point, we're at the public portion of the meeting. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Should this be green? Or is that?
No, that's good.
Okay.
Evening, Honorable Commissioners and Sir President. I have two public comments. One is on item number 10 and 11. My name is Giusepe Monticelli, Eden Road, Ward 72, Onmore, Graham's Ward. My first public comment would be on the speed pump experiment here. And that would personally be, I am in favor of it, but the problem I see here is, I really would wish that other avenues were tried out before we would have to get to this point. That being, being mentioned of maybe the crime control process of maybe setting up an officer at the Flower Town Acme shopping lot, or quite frankly, the firehouse that's right across from Wise Road. That could have been done. That's a crime control process, you know? Then you also have the due process thing that could have been done, you know? Easily tickets could have been handed out and stuff like that. I know it takes up valuable resources, but it only takes one officer. It really makes me believe that this option was not explored. At least, that's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong. My second opinion will comment tonight would be on Agenda Item Number 10. I'm glad the department found a probationary officer. I hope this officer most likely went through the silver service test and had outstanding, outstanding scores on that silver service test. I really hope that. Really hope that this officer is being hired by meeting all statutory requirements. And I wish that officer best of luck if he is going to be voted in tonight. No objection with that. Greatly appreciate it. The only thing I would question that is, why doesn't our officer need to join the force when we already have about 30 on the force? That's on my public comment tonight on Agenda Items. Thank you, Sir President.
Great. Thank you very much. And just to be clear, the officer will be replacing with a slot. We're not increasing the size of the police force.
What was the size of the police force right now?
Thirty?
Yes.
Thirty, okay. Which is basically what it's been for 40 years. We keep it where it is. And that includes the detectives and the supervisors and whatnot.
Okay. Any response on item number 11, on the experiment there of the speed bumps?
Well, that's something that we...
What was that experiment done?
Oh, yeah, there was...
I mean, I've heard about the test of having how many cars of the thousand each day, but really, you know, the survey could have been on if the crime control process of ramping up tickets, of saving their...
We've done that, yes. We've done...
And what was the results?
I don't know the specific results. I do know that, as you know from the speed test, the speed, since we're not allowed to enforce until they're 10 miles above the speed limit, there were very few that were there. So enforcement probably yielded very few.
Okay.
Plus enforcement doesn't even get that many because the policeman doesn't always able to hide that well because we're not allowed to use radar. So they get seen and they slow down. But that doesn't mean you don't do it.
They don't use speed radar here?
It's against the law for local police to use radar.
In Pennsylvania.
In Pennsylvania.
In Pennsylvania, it's against the law to...
In the whole state?
In the whole state.
For local municipalities.
For local...
State police are the only ones allowed to use it.
Okay. Did not know that fact. Thank you. That's a conclusion of my comment.
We'd be happy to talk to you about that because we'd love to change it. The fear on it, and I understand it, is that townships will just use it to print money, you know, to just give tickets to everybody.
Yeah, and you know that.
And that's not what we... We don't actually get that much money from the tickets. But we want people to drive safely. And that's why the states try to come up with mechanisms where they allow it, but if your fines go way up, you can't keep it, just so you don't create a perverse incentive.
How long has that been around with that act?
Forever.
Forever?
Yeah.
Long years?
Yeah.
And I'm glad that's in there because that kind of prevents a type of situation that I call as revenue generation from happening.
Correct.
But I'm glad that's enforced.
It has gotten better from our point of view in that we've gotten more tools we can use, but radar is not one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Chief, please state your name and address.
Jim Gordon, 106 Olmert Avenue, Chairman of the STEMS Committee. Fire Chief, you run Fire Company, and I'm here about the speed bumps that you guys want to put in on Wise Avenue. As you know, and I'm sure you've been told, you know, by our liaison, that the STEMS is adamantly against any type of speed bump. Creates a safety issue with fire trucks going over it, with equipment on the trucks and things like that, with people in there. It slows response times. It may not seem like a lot of 10 to 15 seconds, you know, slowdown in response time, but a fire doubles in size every 60 seconds. So it could be catastrophic to the person sitting in the fire. There's other avenues you can explore. You know, you can put rumble strips on the street, you know, but I think before you guys do anything and before, because this was never brought up to us, that this was going in here in the STEMS meeting, you know, you should be coming to us and discussing this with us before, you know, this goes on. When you go, you know, if you Google "speed humps and fire truck safety," there's tons of articles from all over the country of emergency services, you know, are totally against this because of this. So I would say, don't put it in there. It's a bad idea. But if you do put it in there, any type of device you have, you should be consulting with STEMS before you do that.
Great.
And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I just...
Yeah.
Just a point of clarity, Jim. So the STEMS meeting and it not being brought up, that it had advanced this far, was my fault. I am the co-chairman of Emergency Management, and I also was aware that this was being talked about. So I apologize for that.
And I will...
Second to that, we had already received a letter from STEMS saying they were not in favor of speed bumps. We brought that up to the group and reinforced that position for STEMS. So even though we didn't bring up the specific, yes, Wise Avenue is going to be a test project or that's what was tentatively happening, but we did bring up STEMS concern about speed bumps all along through the process.
There's got to be some other, again, if you Google this, you know, I did it ten minutes before I got here, you know, there's other, you know, quote-unquote traffic noise that you can hear with a bump that's actually, I mean, a car can go over bumps, you know, they're designed to endure, you know, so you can ride it, and you can feel it, but designed for more. And trucks, as mentioned, you know, I don't know who's ridden a truck, but it shoots you right out of the seat with a bump like that. I don't care if you're going 5 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, I don't care what it is, it jumps you out of the seat. You know, you've got nose roads in the back of that truck that come loose, you know? Imagine yourself in an ambulance, many, many ambulance guys going in there, you know, quote-unquote, you're supposed to be helping, but if you're working on somebody going somewhere. Imagine driving over that and plus the guy laying in the seat, you know, with a broken leg or whatever. So there's just tons of things I think they can explore versus putting some sort of, you know, vertical device or something in there.
Thank you. You're not getting your best side on TV right now, by the way. You have Royce Frannick back there. So George, don't do it from the aisle.
George Womack, 407 Pennock Road, Flower Town, also here representing STEMS and also Flower Town Fire Company. Basically, reiterate what Jim said as far as STEMS Board. You know, they're just a bad idea. Personally, I think, once you put one in as a test, it's going to stay. You know, what are the parameters of the test? Is the parameter set as to what you're going to look at later on down the road in six months that this test is going to prove or disprove? Once this speed hump goes in there, I can tell you, everybody else in Springfield's going to be sitting here going, "I want one on my road. I want one on my road." Let me be the first one to say, "I want one on Penn Oak Road." Okay? So if this test goes through and it's there, you're going to have speed humps all over the township, you know? And snowplow. I don't snowplow big roads like this, but little roads. What are they going to do to the guy's snowplow? It's going to tear plows right off the front of the trucks. You know, there's just, I think there's just a lot of other, like, look, moving, I'm sorry, Jim. Jim said, you know, there's other options, I think. You know, do other townships, has anybody gone to other townships and asked what you use, what they've used? And if so, what are the townships? I'd like to personally reach out to their marshal, to their chiefs of their area, and see what they've done in their area, what their answer is if they're using them, how it affects them in their area. So if there's been townships looked at, you know, please forward them on so we can look at them as far as a fire standpoint. But from a personal level, I just think, once you put one in as a test, if there's parameters set up, great. If there's not, maybe we should look at parameters to see what this test does and somehow figure out how you're going to stop it throughout the whole township.
Great. Thank you, George. Do we have any other public comment at this point? Okay. There being none, we will move on to the committee reports. And so there will be two more public comments. There will be the general public comment at the end, and then the last item on the agenda, which is the zoning code amendment. The way that works is there's a little bit of sleight of hand here. We have to hold a separate hearing for that. This is, and this will be very quick, but when we get to that item, we will suspend the current meeting and we will open the hearing, and then I'll read a one-page summary, and then people will have yet another chance if they want to comment on that, and the Board will have another chance to comment on that, which probably will be really short because it's kind of a technical amendment. And then we will close that hearing. This is all sort of a two-minute thing. We will close the hearing and then go back into our meeting, at which point we will probably have one motion, which would be to approve that zoning code because we have to do that in the regular meeting. And then we would have the final public comment. So after we get past item 13, there's going to be some shuffling around, although it will be quick, I suspect, based on the amount of comments we've had so far, which I think is none on that particular matter. So that said, we'll move on, and I start out as the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee. The first matter is the October bill listing, and I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the September check reconciliation in the amount of $702,598.73 in the October bill listing in the amount of $1,628,424.21. That's my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The second is our budget meeting schedule. The budget will be presented to the Board a week from today, which is the 17th of October, in this room at 7:00. It will be officially presented at our next business meeting, which will be on November 14th at 7:30 in this room. And then the final hearing and the adoption will be at the December meeting, which is December 12th at 7:30 in this room. And this room is the Springfield Township Building, for those watching on television. That's item number two. Number three, Resolution 1459. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1459, a resolution distributing the annual state allocation of the Springfield Township Municipal Pension Plans in compliance with Pennsylvania Act 205 of 1984, the Municipal Pension Funding Standard and Recovery Act. Under date of September 30th, 2018, the township receives state pension fund aid in the amount of $435,648.13, which will be distributed into the three township pension plans, utilizing a formula provided by the Township Pension Fund Administrator. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
With this contribution, do we have an idea of what percent we have funded these pension Have we funded?
We are...
Would this represent the funding of 80% of our pension liabilities, 60%?
The market went down 800 points today, so it's what we were told.
It changes constantly. The next valuation will be done at the end of this year.
Okay. But do we have any ballpark as to what the...
I think it's gone up since it was at 80 because the market's gone up. And these are sort of statutory, we haven't stopped contributing to it. At some point, unless it goes up, it will, probably not this year's, the budget we're about to start on, but in next year's budget, we might get some relief if the market stays up.
I just bring this up because it seems as if we're having, we're going to have a significant number of employees retiring shortly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions and comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And now about the Library Advisory Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept the letter dated September 6, 2018, from Ramona Salati resigning her position as a member of the Library Advisory Committee effective December 31, 2018. Ms. Salati served on the committee for 11 years, and during that time, she also served as the chairperson of the advisory committee for several years. Ms. Salati was an active participant in the design and opening of the new free library of Springfield Township, which opened in January 2018. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comment?
I just have one comment, Mr. President.
Yes.
I had the pleasure, when I was serving as the liaison, to serve with Ramona, and she just consistently did a wonderful job on the committee, and I'm sure her presence will be missed.
Thank you. I certainly share that. Having been on the committee, I'm not real thrilled that she, her letters dated, I think, the day that I got reassigned to that committee, but I take that up with her. Any other questions and comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Moving on to the item number five, our Township Auditors. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint B. Bergwall &amp; Company Certified Public Accountants to serve as the Springfield Township Auditors to audit the township's financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2018. Consistent with the engagement letter dated September 5, 2018, the cost of the engagement is $22,900, which is the same fee charged for the 2017 audit. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That concludes my report. We now move on to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you.
I would like to report that paving is going very well throughout the township, and other than a small hiccup with some notices on the Olmert Avenue, paving's gone perfectly.
Great. Thank you. I would call on the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is going to sound like a filibuster tonight. Not intentional. So I have three items tonight, and the first one is concerning the Axelrod MPD of Philadelphia subdivision. So the Axelrod subdivision plan is a two-lot residential subdivision plan located at 241 Northwestern Avenue. An existing dwelling and detached garage, shed, and associated paving are proposed to be demolished to create two building lots. Each lot will include a single-family dwelling, an on-lot water well, septic system, and subsurface stormwater management system. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Axelrod MPD of Philadelphia LP, prepared by Land Corps Engineering dated March 14, 2018, last October 2, 2018, which consists of a 10-sheet plan set and a stormwater management report prepared by Land Corps Engineering dated March 14, 2018, last revised August 10, 2018. The plan approval includes the following waivers, deferments, or partial waivers to requirements of the subdivision and land development ordinance. One, Chapter 95-10A, which requires a 50-foot right-of-way and a minimum 30-foot cartway. The revised plans include the construction of a vehicular refuge area as a part of one of the driveways in lieu of widening the cartway. Number two, Chapter 95-10I, which requires the installation of a four-foot wide sidewalk. This requirement shall be deferred, not waived. Number three, Chapter 9511I2 and 9511I2A, related to providing eight street trees along Northwestern Avenue and planting the trees within 15 to 25 feet of the edge of the street pavement. Number four, Chapter 9511I8A, the sanitary sewer line on Lot Number Two will be located within the drip line of the existing trees. Number five, Chapter 9511I8B, a temporary physical barrier to be erected and a minimum of one foot from the drip line on all sides of the vegetation will encroach into the drip line during demolition of the existing dwelling. And number six, Chapter 9511I11C, the tree replacement schedule will be as set forth on the landscaping plan of this plan set. The plan approval is also subject to and conditioned upon all matters contained in the letter dated August 30, 2018, from the Office of the Township Engineer to the zoning officer being resolved to the satisfaction of the township engineer prior to the recording of the plans. That is my motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and then, Peter, were you going to offer an amendment?
Yes. Yes, I'm going to offer an amendment, okay? I haven't got the ordinance in front of me, so I can't literally recite the actual legal text of the ordinance. But I think the Board understands my concerns, and the public should understand my concerns with regard to the road, Northwestern Avenue, in that section of the township. Anybody who's tried to go down that road, especially recently or the end of the summer, it's basically a one-lane, one-lane road, half of which is in Philadelphia and approximately half of which is in Springfield Township. So I think at the widest part, we probably maybe have 15 feet of total cartway, and I think it presents a real hazard to both the public and our firemen and our ambulance drivers and our police and our trash municipal services people who have to use that road every day. There's no way that two cars can pass without one of them almost pulling off the road. So to allow, again, the doubling of the density on this lot from one single-family home to two and without addressing the current conditions of the road, which are, in my opinion, poor, is a mistake. So my amendment would be to, on our side, because of course, we have no ability to tell Philadelphia what to do, but on our side, to widen the cartway to the current cartway width, which I think would be not the new right-of-way line, but the old right-of-way line, which is probably another six to eight feet wider than it is now, which would, in essence, be about the same width as this proposed little pull-off they're talking about, or, you know, trash collection area that they're talking about on one of the driveways. So, I mean, that's my concern. That's my amendment.
Now, I don't have it in front of me, but last time, there was just one, that, all you needed to officially do to get there is to not, to remove one of the waivers, right? Has that worked on? Isn't that how we did it last month?
Yeah, so the elimination of waiver number one.
So your motion, I'm restating your motion, is to leave everything Baird said except to remove number one will get us there. And then Baird, you are in a position to accept or reject it. I would recommend that you accept it so that the seven of us can vote on it. Otherwise, you just cut out, you could cut out democracy, but then he can make another motion, so...
Far be it for me to cut out.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the mo... Do we need to have a second on the amendment at this point? Okay. Do we have a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Who's second it?
Glenn.
I'll second it.
So from a procedural standpoint, what we'll do, we can talk more if we want, but I think what we'll do is we will vote on the amended thing, and then if it does not, if you are not in favor of the widening of the road and doing it the way, planning it, you should vote against the amendment, and then we'll go back to the original motion, which we won't make Baird read again, if that be the case. I point out...
Jeff, would you state that one more time, please?
I will state it in a minute one more time because I want to discuss it first.
Okay.
It's so confusing. The Planning Commission looked at this prior to last month, and they approved it, granting that waiver, which keeps the road roughly the width that it is. It actually gets a little bigger. And then we deadlocked 33 last month. Commissioner Standish wasn't here, so we couldn't resolve it either way, which meant nothing passed. We couldn't vote it down, and we couldn't vote in favor of it. So then the developer tweaked the plan and created a spot on the edge of it that does actually pull, create a spot for trucks to pull over and for cars to pass, but it's not the whole width. Part of the challenge is there are two power poles in the width, and that's really the biggest expense. There are other issues as to what it does to the plantings, but I think the power poles are the biggest problem. And so that's what was presented to the Planning Commission, who didn't actually have to change their point of view because they'd already approved it. That's what, that's what the fallback, or what the first proposal is, would be just widening it in one spot. But what Peter's requesting is that we widen it the whole length of the property, with the logic being that as other properties, we do have another one coming up down the street, as other properties come through planning, we could slowly but surely widen spots on the street. And as you guys, at least you were there, George, when we went through it with TC 12 years ago, that's been widened, or will be widened, for that stretch further up.
I don't have a real big comment.
You're not, but go ahead. It's just nudity.
I read that real quick when you read the full comment. As far as a fire standpoint, I completely agree with Mr. Wilson, and the biggest problem is, and it's always been, we're always getting chuckle-bait letters to the residents down there, is the trees.
Yeah.
Trees and get our truck down, our rivals.
Well, I think that's something, regardless of how this works out, we ought to come up with a plan.
And then what we do is a lot of the properties down there, they have gates that can't, we can't get a ladder truck in that road in that speed to say, "It's not happening." Because of the road's not wide enough to make the swing, you can't get the...
Well, I think the worst gate is going to go away because that's getting developed in five homes, or they've filed for that.
Well, that makes it the worst if there's five homes down there. Down there in parallel is first in over there, and they've already put aside the truck on the block, so we just only try it.
Yeah, okay.
So if the residents realize we can't get it...
Well, and you'll get that one because that'll be, that'll come to STEMS. Okay.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yeah.
Okay. So the change... Okay, so the, the change to the plan, which you just talked about, the widening of the cartway, that, to me, on the plan, it looks like it's a distance of about 20 feet maximum. So this is, this is a 224-foot stretch of road, they're talking about as a consideration, widening it to, or what I'm recommending, to the, to the current right-of-way line, about 20 or 25 feet, so.
Is that right? Okay. Okay, so, the first vote, you would vote yes if you support the subdivision, and this is what's known as a by-right subdivision, so we have to support it. We don't have to support the waivers. So the first one would be you support the subdivision, but, but you insist that the road, we not grant that waiver and the road be brought to its full width on our side. I think, so that's Peter's amendment. So voting yes means they have to go back to the drawing board and widen it. Okay? Any other questions or comments? So all in favor of basically the widening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So I think that was a 4-3 vote. Jonathan, you voted in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, that's a 4-3 vote, so it's, it's, did you get who it was? It was the three old coots that voted against it. Then we don't need a second vote. Go ahead, the floor is yours, Baird.
Okay.
What?
So he doesn't have to come back again. I think what he would like to have probably is an approval subject to that change, being me.
You just got it. Uh, because his plans aren't compliant with that.
Correct.
Um, the solicitor has said that we can rework, now that we know how the votes, I didn't know how they were going to fall out, kind of thought they were going to fall the other way.
He doesn't have to come back.
We would, but didn't we just do that? We just took one waiver away and we approved it.
But that's not what the plan shows.
Oh, but so, because it's inconsistent with the plan, so how do you want to word it now? He would, approval subject to the change?
Approval subject to that waiver not being granted, so that the widening in the amendment is accomplished on the plan and the developer doesn't have to come back here.
Second.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion, it doesn't matter. I'll even vote for it, because we've already, we've already lost, so, okay. So everybody understand, this, we're rewording that last vote.
And I'm switching my vote, just because we've already decided the answer, and now we're, this is just giving you a procedural advantage here. Doesn't change my opinion, but, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Can I just make one?
Yes.
That means for the developer, there are two alternatives. One is to comply and change your plan, or two is to take an appeal.
Baird, you're back for number seven.
Can I ask, what does an appeal involve?
If the failure to grant the waiver is deemed unreasonable by a court, then that would be thrown out.
All right. Okay. So my next subject here is the JWS Gravers LLC subdivision. So the JWS Gravers LLC subdivision is a two-lot residential subdivision located at 500 East Gravers Lane. The existing parcel contains .61 acres and maintains a 3.5-story dwelling that sustained major fire damage several years ago. The property has remained vacant since the fire in the dwelling is proposed to be demolished as a part of the subdivision plan. Lot Number One is proposed to be .32 acres in size, and Lot Number Two is proposed to be .29 acres in size. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the preliminary slash final subdivision and land development plan for JWS Gravers LLC, prepared by Hiblin Engineering Company LLC, dated May 4th, 2018, last revised July 26th, 2018, which consists of an eight-sheet plan set and a stormwater management report prepared by Hiblin Engineering Company LLC, dated July 2018. The plan approval is subject to and conditioned upon all matters contained in a letter dated August 30th, 2018, from the Office of the Township Engineer to the zoning officer being resolved to the satisfaction of the township engineer prior to the recording of the plan. The approval is also subject to the condition and conditioned upon matters offered by and agreed to by the principles of JWS Gravers LLC. Those are, number one, the plan shall show a turning radiance for a large passenger car or truck, delivery truck, excuse me, a large passenger car or delivery truck on both driveways. Number two, existing trees that are incorporated into the landscaping plan shall be evaluated for viability by an ISA-certified arborist. The owner will actively maintain the property to make sure vegetation is cut at all times and the existing building is secured by, before demolition, that was number three. Number four, the existing house that was damaged by fire shall be demolition, excuse me, shall be demolished within 120 days of the date of the approval of the subdivision land development plan. And number five, photographic documentation of the existing building will be coordinated with either the Chestnut Hill Conservancy or the Springfield Township Historical Society before the building is demolished. So that is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have one comment, and it applies to both this one and the one before, and to a lesser extent, the next one. These, all three of these subdivisions are what are known as by-right subdivisions, which mean they are, the lot, the two lots they're creating out of one are totally compliant with the zoning. So we are in a position where we are obligated to accept them, because those are their rights. Now, what you saw in the first one was, they come with these waivers attached, which tend to be pretty minor, they have to do with the number of trees they replant, or sometimes even more minor things like things they don't want to show on the plan, because it's just too much surveying work. As you saw, we did not grant a waiver on the last one, so we did approve it, but we approved it with one less waiver than the Planning Commission recommended and that they were expecting. I bring that up now because there's been some agitation in the neighborhood that this house shouldn't be subdivided, they should figure out a way to keep it, and this subdivision and tearing down the house is entirely within their rights, and it's not in our position to stop it, and frankly, as someone who lives a couple houses away, I think it's the right outcome for the house, because the developer tried to figure out a way to make it work, and it just, the numbers don't add up. So, the bottom line is, on these subdivision, the net, the third one that's coming up is not, we're not deciding it tonight, but it's the same thing. We're not the zoning board, we're not in a position to say, oh, we don't like this, this is too much. These are, these are their rights to get it passed, it's only the waivers we can tinker with, so, and I don't think any of them are contested at this point. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. President. Will the demolition, once this is approved, would the demolition be 120 days from today or from 120 days written notice given to the contractor?
That's today, isn't it? Have we discussed this Monday night? Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear.
It's today.
The motion reads from, from the plan approval, which is.
Today?
Right, so unless we deadlock it and it goes to the next month or something, or we vote it down, so we'll know in 30 seconds. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So yes, Eddie, it is 10, it's from today, now officially. Okay.
All right.
Baird?
Okay, so my third item here is the Heritage Farm II subdivision. Heritage Two Farm, the Heritage Farms II subdivision and land development plan is located at 24-28 Ronald Circle Orland. The subject of the plan is a three-lot residential subdivision. The existing parcel contains .553 acres of land. A single-family dwelling has already been demolished on the property. So I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated October 4th, 2018, from Michael Bruce, manager, Forest Edge at Coventry LLC, extending the 90-day subdivision and land development plan review period for an additional 90 days, in order that the applicant may revise the plans for compliance with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So this is just extending it. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We move to the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to give you the recycling report. During the month of September 2018, Springfield Township residents recycled 189.2 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 77.5%. The net cost for the month was $17,867.34. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. And on to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items this evening. First is a police officer appointment. I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment to Zachary H. Sauerman, Kent Road, Abington, as a probationary police officer with the Springfield Township Police Department. The conditional officer, offer of employment is conditioned upon Mr. Sauerman successfully completing PA Act 120 training and passing a medical and psychological examination. The earliest date of employment shall be January 7th, 2019. Also, on October 8th, the Board of Commissioners was privileged to interview three candidates to fill one vacancy within the Township Police Department. The Board looks forward to working with Mr. Sauerman for many years to come. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is the speed hump experiment. Before I read this, Jim and George and Franny, I'd also like to apologize for not bringing this to your attention at the last STEM meeting. I move that the Board of Commissioners waive, on a temporary basis, the policy of the Board of Commissioners that prohibits the installation of speed humps on township streets, in order that a speed hump may be installed on Weiss Avenue, Flower Town, for a six-month experimental period. At the conclusion of the six-month period, the Board of Commissioners will evaluate studies to be performed by the Township Police Department on the success of the speed hump in managing vehicular traffic on Weiss Avenue. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Let me start out with a comment here. About a year and a half ago, I, using my presidential prerogative, was getting frustrated that we were spending an awful lot of time with each meeting, with people coming with legitimate concerns about cut-through traffic on their streets and wanting speed humps. And we had, we had, there are none in Springfield, so we'd never said yes. And it's a new group each time, and it was taking a lot of time, and I said, why don't we take a step back? Let's read all the literature, let's talk to the surrounding townships, let's talk to everybody here, let's talk to our insurers, let's talk to PennDOT, let's figure out the legalities of it, because there's questions about that. And we really dug into it, we did a lot of research. It went to STEM, which is our emergency management board, they, all three fire chiefs were opposed to it, the ambulance, which was Springfield at that point, was opposed to it, and that board, which is comprised of them and the police, voted against it. Our police were a little more agnostic about it, because I think they're more the administrators of this, that they didn't come out in favor of it. Public Works Department was not in favor of it, because it's challenging on the, both the plows and the trash trucks, who are out a lot more than the plows. We talked to White Marsh Township, who has one speed hump, which is actually right down the street, from one of our commissioners, from Commissioner Cobb. They told us, and I'm not sure who "they" was, but they told us that that's the only one in the township, and that they were not happy with it, and that they were not going to put any more in. There are other townships that have them, and I don't remember those details. The literature that we read kind of went in both ways. There was a lot of literature against it, but there were others that say that if nothing else works, they do slow down the cars, but there's the side effect of they also slow down cars, the trucks that you may want to get there. My bias on it, and so we passed a policy at that point, saying we will not do speed humps, and we thought, well, that will keep it out of these, and then this group was the next group, and they were upset, because they weren't a part of that discussion, and they, we didn't issue a report or anything, and so we ended up kind of right back where we were, talking about speed humps again. And my concern has always been that, if, thinking, thinking from a resident standpoint, which is where we should always start, it does probably make it safer for the kids, but it doesn't make it safer for the person whose house is on fire, it doesn't make it safer for the person that's in cardiac arrest, because those few seconds could matter. And if they do, and I will concede, they slow you, they do slow down the traffic. Now, there were studies that said otherwise, that people gun it between the speed bumps, and you need more than, we don't need to split those hairs, that's what we're trying to test for here. But I don't know how much safer they make it. You know, if somebody's speeding down the street and they hit a speed bump, they're a whole lot more dangerous than if they were just speeding down the street, so that's, and that's not, you can't really research that easily. But anyway, that's, that's my opinion, so we went through the process, we came up with a policy, I'm content with the policy, and I've been pretty clear about that all along, but we agreed to put it up for a vote, and I know there are strong opinions on both sides, and the point of this isn't to open the floodgates, which I'm convinced it will eventually do, as Chief Wilmot said. The point is to just do this one and get more data and get a sense, so we can make a decision going forward. Now, to do that, if we do go to the next step, then you come up with a policy on what is it? And we have a draft policy, they, the police put one together and said, here's what the policy would look like. Now you look at that policy and say, well, what are the implications of the policy? Well, in this particular, the main criteria, there were other criteria, like you had to have tried certain things, and you have to get buy-in on the streets, but basically, everybody's going to want a speed bump on their block, so you'd get that buy-in. The two harder ones are, you need a volume of traffic, and you need a speed of traffic above the speed limit. In this particular case, the volume is satisfied, but the speed isn't. They're not actually driving fast enough under this policy, and that's not reason to vote this down, but that's the cautionary tale of, if we go down the road, then you're going to have people here saying, well, we don't meet the policy, but we almost meet the policy. So then we'll be fighting over the policy. Do we bend the policy? Geez, it's just 3 miles per hour, and, so no matter how much we try and construct the policy, I think we're still going to run into challenges, and how do we roll them out? So I think that's the crux of it. There are a lot of other arguments to be made, but my sense is that it's a can of worms that I'm not willing to open, and I think we did a thorough job when we looked at it before. So I open it up to other comments.
I have a comment, Mr. President.
Yes.
I, I think you left out one very important component with this, addressing the speed on this road, and that, that is that we, we were asked, and we did provide, the radar-assisted little signs that said, you know, you're going 35, you're going 45, for probably at least two periods, two times, and I believe that there is currently a radar sign on the street now, and the indications that we seem to be getting from that machine, which counts, I didn't realize this, but it counts traffic and records the speed, and then we can download that to the system, so, is the conclusion that you pointed out, that although there are a lot of cars on that, on that road at this last period, thousand, a thousand cars a day, if you can believe that, they weren't going that fast, or they didn't, they didn't hit the threshold at, you know, 85% going above the speed limit there. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to leave the public with the impression that we've been sitting on our hands and doing nothing. We have been addressing the concerns of the residents on the street, I think, possibly not to their total satisfaction, because I believe, you know, a certain number of people really just want the speed bumps, or, you know, go home, you know, type of deal, so.
Okay. Yeah, one other point I forgot to make is, the traffic's still there, so if you push it off one street, it's going to go on another street. You're not, they're just going to not, not drive. Now, what you want them to do is to go on the arterial roads, but if they're backing up, their people are still going to find other routes, so a little bit of this is survival of the fittest. If one, you make it difficult to drive down one street, then the next block over's likely to get an increased volume. In this case, I think everybody will applaud this, we did the closest. In this case, I think everybody will applaud this, we did, the closest light that they're basically trying to avoid is Mill Road and Bethlehem Pike. And we, thanks to our head of Public Works, we lobbied PennDOT to make that light longer on Mill Road. So that actually helps with the backups. People may not know that, but it will at least shorten it. And that, that is not an easy thing to accomplish with PennDOT. Of course, with the detours and another detour coming in, that area is very heavily trafficked. But that's just part of the calculus. Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Wilson said, as we were looking at Weiss Avenue, one of the things, other than the radar sign, we did ask White Marsh Township to install additional stop signs on Mill Road, which at this point have seemed to slow the cars down from making that right-hand turn at a high rate at the top of Weiss Avenue. So just another thing to throw in at what we've done so far.
And we thank them for that.
So I live on Sunny Brook Road, which is a cut-through street, and I have a four-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a 10-year-old. And one of the challenges for us is, the kids love to play outside. And it is, you know, it's scary. It is very scary living on a cut-through street where people frequently speed through, and you don't feel safe having your kids play in the front yard. And that's something that my wife and I deal with on a daily basis, where our kids come home from school on the weekends. That's our reality. So when these families came to our meetings on a monthly basis, they've been here routinely, I feel their pain, and I share their fear for their children's safety. There isn't an easy answer to this. And frankly, I don't know what the answer is. But I know that we live at a time and in a society that seems to reward speed and quickness and getting there at the fastest. The advent of technology like Waze that is taking people on routes for, really, the first time ever, taking them through neighborhoods. I think the advent of Waze has, has changed traffic patterns in our township permanently. I know that when I look around this township, and I see our most valuable assets, the places where our kids go, to school, to pray, they're surrounded by speed bumps. So I recognize that that would slow down the response time if something happened at our high school, at a middle school, at the elementary school. But they're there because they work, and they slow people down, and they keep the kids safe. And I hear what the fire chief said, and I respectfully listen to it. I don't know what the answer is. But they're not speeding. He even said that they're not speeding on the road. And I think we'll have to make that up. Do you know where it is?
Yep.
There's sidewalks there.
Yep.
Okay. I play in the backyard. I never played in the street. We didn't have sidewalks there. We walked in on the grass. Our parents taught us to play in the backyard. We didn't play in front of them.
Yep.
So we're not talking about a speed issue, because your study showed that there's no speed issues, correct?
Correct.
So we're not talking about a speed issue here. You're just talking about cars.
We're talking speed.
Cars that are coming down the street.
Yep.
No matter what, whether you're going 25 or 50 miles an hour. But again, we're not talking about a speed issue, because your own study said that they weren't speeding. So.
Okay, well, we really shouldn't be taking comments from, you're right. And I, we're probably, it did say that, but it, they would still be slowed down. You know, the neighbors don't say, oh, they're all going the right speed. We hear about the Amazon trucks that's barreling down, and it's not a 0 percent thing. It just doesn't meet what would be a normal threshold. But your points, we've talked about all this stuff.
I have a comment, Mr. President, if I may. As you will, as this board well knows, I was against the speed bumps. I think that, first of all, it does. It's a hindrance to our emergency services, our fire trucks, ambulance, et cetera. And I also believe that it's going to be a liability to the township in damages caused by cars going over the bump at an excessive rate of speed. Even though that it is a lost cause, the frivolous lawsuits that we will generate has to be answered. And therefore, that cost would also become, you know, the township will have to worry about those additional costs. But I am a proponent of, these are people that elected us to this board. And I, even though I am dead against it, we've talked to these residents several times, and we asked them, and I asked them bluntly, with the radar or the speed bumps? And they said that they would feel, they would like to see what the studies of the speed bumps would, would bring about. So they, these are the residents that elected us to these seats. And I think that we have an obligation to those residents. And it is for that reasoning only that I am supporting the speed bumps test, because I'm not in favor of them, but our residents feel a need to have them. So, and for that way, that's my feeling on it. They came to us with a concern. They elected us to this office. I think we have an obligation to them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have other comments from the board? Okay, we will move to the vote. So this vote is, would be to suspend our policy for the sake of this one test. All in favor of suspending the policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That's a 3-4 vote. The motion does not carry, so the policy remains intact. We have made promises to the residents that we will keep them in the cycle for the radar sign, and we will, we are trying to get more radar signs, so that that will be more available to them. Thank you, and thank you, guys, for weighing in. I do have one just comment about Waze, because Waze is really the root of the problem, which is, and there's nothing you can do about that. And my query is, we were talking about Northwestern Avenue, and I would bet you any dollars to doughnuts that Northwestern Avenue has a lot less traffic on it now, because people used to think it was a through street. And Waze doesn't send them down there. I'm not trying to reopen the other discussion.
If the traffic won't voice out.
I'm sorry?
If the entrance stays at the wall.
Mm-hmm.
If the traffic won't voice out, they're down.
If they've configured it, so it's only on, interesting.
If you make a left now, the entrance will form a plate. But I can say, if people come out, they make a right, so they don't have to go out.
Well, what if the Wawa moved? I mean, they've certainly tried to move before.
He makes a, Jeff.
What?
The chief makes a val, saying that. However, we're seeing what the effects of that are at the Luke Oil. They have two no-left-turn signs.
Yeah, everybody just ignores them, yeah.
And everybody, left-hand turn of.
Well, I think what George is actually talking about is.
Shutting it down?
Is closing those, take the curve cuts out, put, put high curve in. So, that's what you're saying, right?
Of course, they have a left turn.
Correct.
They could still go there. They just have to make two rights instead of one. But it would be, it would still change it.
Yeah, I, I believe that, I would say, a lot of the traffic coming out of Wawa or the Weiss Avenue, make that right. And there's a down Weiss Avenue to, not to.
Mill.
Right, left one plate.
Yeah.
Back around on the Mill Road to get out of the lane. Getting out of, or, sorry, left one plate, it's just.
Right, and there are two difficult left turns they have to make that they avoid.
Right down the wall, go down Weiss Avenue. I bet you would cut out, I don't know the number, but I bet you 30 percent.
It could be.
Mr. President, can I say one more comment?
Yes.
Then I'll be quiet on the subject. I just, for the record, think that this will continue to come up. As development increases, it will increase in our township. It'll increase around our township. We are a cut-through township, where as people go from White Marsh trying to get to 309. And again, I completely understand your comment about playing in the backyard. I just want to reiterate to the board and to everybody else, the challenges of being a parent today, and trying to get your kid not to be on a screen, not to be stuck on a phone, trying to get them outside, it's a real challenge. And the fear that parents have on our streets is real. And it is, it's a cultural thing. We want to move quick. We want to drive with our phone in our hands. I see it every day. And I just pray that nothing happens to my kids or anybody else. It is a very real thing, and I just think that the, it isn't, it isn't just a speed thing. It definitely is a volume issue. And as development continues to, to increase, and it will, these issues will continue to come up. And all I'm asking is that we don't have a blanket rule for just taking this, this off the table. So I'm sure that we'll revisit at some point, but I, and also, I just want to reiterate that I did respectfully hear your issues, and I do, I do hear them. I just, I don't know what the answer is. I really don't.
Then we need to continue to monitor as things change, and bumps get different, and the studies get different, and we figure out, or maybe even the laws of limiting cut-throughs. Some of these streets, you can finesse it by making them one way. That's been discussed. But we're not, we are where we are, and we certainly share those concerns.
Do we believe that the volume has increased because Valley Green Road is closed? Do we believe that's a part of the problem?
Sure.
I would agree with that.
Sure, I would think so.
Oh, it sure is. Can we apply pressure to the county to do something there?
Well, they can't, they're doing, they're moving full speed ahead, even though full speed's four years. But they're, they have plenty of pressure on them.
So, but.
They can't move any quicker on that bridge.
Why? Okay, so to my question about can they move quicker, they take a bridge out on Pennsylvania Avenue. They put a temporary bridge alongside of the bridge, and then they don't stop traffic.
Right.
Yeah.
How can we do that on Pennsylvania Avenue, but we can't do that on Valley Green Road?
I don't know. I mean, that's a PennDOT approach for the county, but I don't know the answer to that. I do know, the reason it's taking so long.
I'm not trying to, you know what I mean.
Yeah, no.
I'm not leaning on you.
And I've had some of these same conversations.
Sure.
And the reason, it's because people are like, why is it going to take four years, whatever it is? The reason is, the new bridge is not engineered, and it needs to really be new. And they kept trying to put it together with bubble gum, and people kept, they'd get it open again, and then somebody else would crash into it. And the more, then it finally got closed. And now, the more they look at it, the more they realize the challenge of the problem is, I don't know the ability of a temporary bridge. I do know that it's a terrible problem, and they're getting a lot of heat about it.
Sure.
When it was, when it was opened, you know, like Jeff said, when people hit around, you could absolutely notice the difference in traffic on the road. It was huge.
Of course. I mean, yeah.
That's my only comment.
Yeah, if there's a way we could do it. And I know that my friend would be happy, because she has to commute for it herself. So, and she hits, goes up Stanton, so she hits that. Okay, Mike, you have another announcement here?
Before I read it, the next portion concerning, I have, through conversations with the neighbors since Monday night, the majority of them being in favor of the speed hump tests, the majorities do see the benefit and the positive side of the speed enforcement signs when they are on Weiss Avenue. So I'll read the, the motion first, and then I'd like to make a comment on the timetable for that. Or should I do that after? Should I wait for comments after?
A motion on what?
What I feel is a necessary timeframe.
For what?
Or recommendation of when the sign should be up and taken out, up and down.
Oh, we're going to do a motion on that? It's not on the agenda.
Can.
Go ahead.
So this is the flashing rate or activated speed. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of two additional flashing rate or activated speed limit signs for deployment throughout Springfield Township by the Springfield Township Police Department. That is my motion.
I would second that.
We've talked about this, and we've made promises that we would do this. I don't have a problem with it. What I don't want to do, and we're not doing, is to promise one block they're going to get it more than another block, or, but the police need to have the discretion on how to do it. And part of what's going on at Weiss that I look forward to is, the research and conventional wisdom is that you're actually better off with the sign coming and going than having the sign there all the time. That people notice it more when it's away and back. So to just, it's obviously cheaper, too, if you're rotating them around. And that's something we can play with on that street. And the signs now capture that data, so you can get, we'd have to obviously have something there to capture the data. I think we are allowed to use radar to just capture data. We just can't use it for enforcement, to try and learn more about what's, what's maximized on the sign. But I think that we were going to deal with this in the budget, but we can do it as a, as a motion.
Kind of a comment.
Yes.
The, the motion needs to say how much we're spending, or needs to provide a methodology for.
Yeah, our sense was, they were around 3,000. You want to put like an $8,000 cap on that, or?
Well, depends on how we're going to.
They're each, yeah, I think.
Oh, and how?
An $8,000 cap would give you a little leeway.
For two. And do we, do we have to say any more than that for process, or?
No, I mean, Don knows, I guess, how he's.
He's authorizing money, and it'll be however law allows it. Any other questions or comments? I'm, I'm fine with it. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, Mike?
We've got one more. Don't you have the coffee with the cop?
Yeah, I have two more. Two more announcements regarding the police. I am pleased to announce that on Saturday, October 13, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., both the Springfield Township and White Marsh Township Police Departments will be hosting Coffee with the Cop at the Giant Food Store, 1874 Bethlehem Pike, Flower Town. This is an opportunity for residents to join their neighbors and police officers for coffee and conversations. There are no agendas or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the officers in the neighborhood. Next, I'd also would like to announce, the Springfield Township Police Department is implementing a new program known as Springfield Township Safe Watch Program. As many residents and businesses have taken extra security measures to monitor their homes and properties by installing outdoor security cameras, the police department is looking for residents and business owners who are willing to share video from these cameras with the police department in the event it captures anything of investigative significance. Participants are under no obligation to give the police the video, and the participants will only be contacted as a part of a criminal investigation. The program is not invasive, as no live feed access will be sought by the police department. Please secure additional information through the Springfield Township Police Department Facebook page, or contact the police department during the business day at 215-836-1606. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Finally, we move to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, the, the zoning hearing board will be, have their monthly meeting on Monday, October 22, at 7:00 p.m. in this room at the Springfield Township Building. We're going to hear two petitions. The first being from Jennifer Greenfield and Christopher Klein of 1509 Allen Road, Orland, PA, 19075, are seeking variances from Section 114-54.B to reduce the side yard setback from 12 feet to 7 feet, and to reduce the aggregate side yard setback from 35 feet to 17 feet in order to construct a detached garage adjacent to their home in the Residence A District. And the second petition that will be heard is on, from Lorenz Properties LLC of 175 Roberts Avenue, Glen Side, PA. They're requesting the following zoning relief for the property at 400 Bethlehem Pike in Air 9. Number one, a special exception per Section 114-71.D permitting three residential units within a multiple dwelling, and a variance to reduce the required minimum lot area per family for a multiple dwelling from 5,000 square feet to 4733 square feet per family. And two, in the alternative, a variance from Section 114-81 to allow three residential units on the property is sought. And this property is located in the Residence D District. That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, I have a question on that for the solicitor. This, the Lorenz property came up a couple of years ago, and I believe we were in opposition to it. I know we were.
We were in opposition to four.
And this, right, they wanted more. And this, this version is what we were asking for back then. Do we need to undo that, or are we okay? Because it's been a long time, or?
We did that.
I think we did.
Did we do that last month? Okay.
I think we did.
Okay. I know we talked about it. Okay. Well, that's easy. Thank you. So finally, what we're going to do is that little sleight of hand I promised. At this point, I will accept a motion to recess from the October 2018 business meeting and convene a public hearing to receive public comment on a proposed ordinance to amend the No-Impact Home-Based Businesses and Residential Zoning District section of the zoning code. That is, I will take, make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now, I'm going to read this page, and then we can move forward. The purpose of the hearing, the public hearing is being held in compliance with Section 609 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code to consider zoning code text amendments to regulate no-impact home-based businesses. The legal requirements associated with the public hearing have been met by publishing a notice of the public hearing in the September 23 and 30, 2018 issue, issues of the Ambler Gazette. In addition, public hearing notices were posted in the Township Building and Library. Copies of the full text ordinance were available in the Township Building, the Library, the offices of Montgomery Publishing, and the Montgomery County Law Library. Summary, the ordinance amends the Code of Springfield Township, Chapter 114 zoning, Article 4, Section 114-41, to repeal Section 114-41-F1, and amend, further amending Article 2, Section 114-21, to modify the definition of no-impact home-based business, and further amending Article 13 to add a new Section 114-139.2, regulations governing no-impact home-based businesses. And I will say, my opinion, that these were mainly housekeeping and trying to make things flow better. We weren't really trying to, and some updating. But we weren't trying to create something new or reinvent the wheel here, which is probably why we have no public comment on it. Planning Commission reviews, the Springfield Township Planning Commission, in a letter dated October 3rd, 2018, it was noted that the Township Planning Commission discussed the proposed ordinance at their meeting of October 2nd, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend enactment of the amended no-impact home-based business ordinance. Montgomery County Planning Commission, on October 29th, the Montgomery County Planning Commission was invited to review and make comments on the draft zoning code amendments. While the County Planning Commission participated in the review process of the Township Planning Commission, the county opted not to provide separate comments on the amendment. So at this point, are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? There being none, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing related to amending the no-impact home-based business ordinance and reconvene the business meeting. I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. We're now back. I told you that would be quick. Have to find the motion. So now we are on the last item of the agenda. We've had the hearing, and now I'm about to make a motion that we accept them. So I move that the Board of Commissioners enact Ordinance 956, an ordinance that amends the Springfield Township Code, Chapter 114 zoning, Article 4, Section 114-41, to repeal subsection 114-41-F1, and further amending Article 2, Section 114-21, to modify the definition of no-impact home-based business, and further amending Article 13 to add a new section, subsection 114-139.2, regulations governing no-impact home-based businesses. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Uh-oh.
Is there a license required?
No. No.
Is there any fees or charges required?
No. No.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And now, our final matter is, is there any public comment at this point? Yes. And please go to the mic, so he can catch you on TV.
Giseppe Monticelli, Ward 72. I had some public comments. Throughout my work as being an MMJ, multimedia journalist, and also investigative journalist, recently, this past month, actually on the 25th of September, I was, as I was doing my work, particularly in the weather, I was approached by a resident on Hunter's Lane. And she expressed an opinion that I highly agree with, and that I observed over throughout my years of being a resident here in the township, where at the intersection of Church Road and Heather Road, there is a major problem of storm water not being properly disposed of into the sewage drains. And the reasoning that I, happening of my observations is, Church Road is not a, at this point of time, it's not a flat surface road. You have the road going up to each of our one sides on angle, and the other side's on angle as well. So when the stormwater runoff is coming from Heather Road, it's going downhill. It's collecting in that basin there when there is a drain there, but it's on the other side of the road, on Church Road. It has nowhere to go. I mean, during light rains, it really does not cause much of a problem. But during heavy, severe flash flooding, and during those winter months that you have major snowfall, and it melts, you have that collectment of water there that's, you know, somewhat a health hazard, especially during the winter months, because you have to worry about mosquitoes, the mosquitoes being, flying around there, you know? There's well tests to prove the fact that mosquitoes like to be inhabited with water. So I find that as being a problem. I really do. And I would appreciate if this could be looked into for their city manager, Mr. Berger, of reevaluating this issue. I know there's multiple other areas in the township that most likely has this, but if this issue could be evaluated, I would appreciate it.
We can certainly do that, and particularly figure out if things aren't working right. The roads can't be flat, or else they'd be all icy. But they can be raked differently, or it could be something's not draining right, or...
Yeah, at least to be evaluated. My second public comment is somewhat piggypacking on Honorable Commissioner Shams' wording and comment about the resurfacing. I personally had the road resurfaced on that toll, you know? I watched that went down, you know? I watched the surrounding resurfacing went down. I find that everything went well, but I would appreciate in the future, when if this would happen, where it's well advised to the residents, that they cannot leave certain parts of the day out of their driveway at all, you know? Because these big vehicles come in, and they take about good four hours just to move the vehicles. And not only it creates a problem of a resident wanting to get out of their driveway with their vehicle, it creates a major, major health hazard of where you can't have the fire trucks coming in. You can't have the emergency medical services coming in. You can't have police, you can't have any medical services coming in. Now, I know this is for a short period of time that, you know, but that really should have been looked at, you know? Because you have a whole road being jammed up throughout the whole day, and throughout a good portion of it, you can't go anywhere. It's obstructing the road. So that really should have been evaluated more and considered before doing this project. Besides from that, I have no other public comment. I greatly appreciate you taking my public comment.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment this time?
I have one, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to announce to the township that Arcadia University is bringing in its first president, who is a person of color, Dr. Ajar Neer. We will be welcoming him in to, not only to Arcadia, but to the area this Saturday, so this Saturday morning. So if you have any free time, please stop through and welcome Dr. Neer. Arcadia is a great educational institution in our area, and a lot of our residents are students there. So, thank you.
Here, here. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other public comment?
I have one.
Look at how public the board is.
I'm done for tonight after this. But first thing, Community Day. Extended thanks and a job well done to the Community Committee. It was a wonderful attended event, and I think it went well. And each year, it seems to grow and grow.
Yes.
And then lastly, Weiss Avenue. I'd like to make a recommendation that the police ultimately can look into it, but for the speed sign on Weiss Avenue, maybe two weeks on, two weeks off, one week on, but at least up for two weeks throughout the month until we see that the traffic goes back to normal at some point when the bridge and Stanton Avenue and all this, you know, chaos around it subsides. But like I said, the residents seem to think that it is effective, and let's see how effective.
Okay. Well, we can pass that on. To any other comments?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Yes. Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.
We adjourned. We adjourned. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Taking that as a recommendation.
You're not taking the tablet?